Welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the common council meeting for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, your honor, it has.
That's great. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozick. Alderman Altman Clothe.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Great. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes, July 19th, 2022.
Rozick, so moved.
No, hold on. Can I just make one comment?
Sure, please.
So on the Alderman notes or comments from last meeting, I had made a comment about the response time on average right now for Western Lakes being 11 minutes and 14 seconds, not 14 minutes. So just wanted to note that. We don't want to make Western Lakes look-
You can amend the minutes if you'd like.
Yeah. Oh, yes. I'd like to amend the minutes to 11 minutes and 14 seconds.
And approve the rest?
And approve the rest.
Rozick, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have a special guest here, and without objection, I'd like to bring our National Guard friend up to the podium in respect of his time in service to our country.
Well, real quick, while Sergeant First Class is heading up there, they've, National Guard Sergeant First Class Wormer had approached me a year and a half. It's been a while, potentially using our Second Street Storage Yard, which is out past Plasticon, as you note in the agreement, but they just wanted, you know, simply be able to pull into the parcel, get their equipment turned around, set, and then have it ready for whatever action they would be taking. There's going to be no live firing, no firing at all of it. One of the advantages of having this parcel for their use is right now they drive to Fort McCoy in order to do this training, so it would save them all the travel time. So that's why it's here, and that's why it's recommended. There's one thing in the legal descriptions where it references Town of Economowalk. We're going to check that. And then one of the other things, I spoke to the Sergeant First Class, is a suggestion was made that maybe they have signage to note that they're doing training, so that if someone's coming by wondering what's going on. But I'll turn it over to Sergeant First Class and let him answer any questions or walk through and-
Thank you very much.
Say nice things about us and-
Yes, Sergeant First Class Wormer, I'm the full-time readiness NCO here in Economowalk. I work at that facility every day. The equipment that we use, this is a very small model of an artillery cannon. The actual cannon is approximately 20 feet long. It's pulled by a truck about the same size as a garbage truck. And the process that we would like to use the lot for is going from that towed position to the ready position, which is this configuration here. It takes nine people to run one of these artillery pieces, and we normally run three at a time. That's the platoon-sized element. So unfortunately, as beautiful as the property is that the armory is on, it's on a hill. It doesn't have a flat space for us to be able to practice. So for us to be able to do this process, we have to spend four hours of travel time going from Economowalk to Fort McCoy, and then another four hours of travel time coming back, which really eats it up when you only have two days a month to practice your skills. So that is why we're asking if it would be possible for us to use that lot for training purposes.
It's great having you here, and I appreciate the explanation. Do any council members have questions? I think you have a very happy group of people to help support what you do, sir.
How far does that thing shoot?
All the way to Eastlake.
We could probably hit your house.
Now, I'm just curious if you accidentally load in a round, if it's going to make it to my house on the end of town.
Beam it right.
Beam it that way? Okay.
It has an unclassified range of 20 miles.
Wow, okay. That's impressive.
Unclassified.
Unclassified. Understood.
So don't stop at the 20-mile mark.
We have absolutely no access to any projectiles or any powder charges for this artillery piece. All of that is stored on military installations. We don't have access to any of that. There's no possibility of it ever-
I would love for you guys to make us aware when you're doing the training, because I think it'd be educational to bring kids out to.
We'd love an audience.
Yeah, we'd really love to come and watch.
That'd be cool.
Love an audience, but unfortunately, you know, the Army does a lot of hurry-up-and-wait, so sometimes it's not the most exciting thing to watch.
We'll bring lawn chairs and beers.
It should be really cool to notify the schools.
Repair for the kids.
Yes, absolutely.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Sergeant Wormer, so are you the Field Artillery Company, or is it a battalion?
It's a battery. It's field artillery battery.
So why am I, I feel bad even saying that. So I went to basic training at Fort Sill, Oklahoma. I was a combat medic, though, so you can excuse me for not knowing the difference. But I know the difference between a gun and a weapon, though, right? So we can call that a gun still, right? I mean, if you call it, you know, a rifle a gun, in basic training, you're going to be doing push-ups, beating your face. I'll remember the difference, but calling it a battery, I should be doing push-ups for that, right, Sergeant?
You gotta drop and give me 20.
If you want to order him to do 10, that would be fine.
Yeah, I'd pay you to do it, actually.
Anyways, no, I fully support it. It's great to have you guys here. So thanks a lot for, you know, bringing this forward, and it's an awesome opportunity to support the Army, so.
And thank you so much for your service, sir, and we don't want to waste any more of your time. But if there's anything you need, as you know, your contact is Mr. Frye. And any other last comments before he leaves? Just want to be, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
On to our next item, which is comments or suggestions from citizens. In the back, there's a blue card. What?
Yeah, should we make a motion on the National Guard?
Should we jump to that?
Well, he kind of moved it up.
To make a motion.
Yeah, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Ellis.
Altman Clothe.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
So what we've just approved is item 8B on the agenda, and thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You are dismissed.
Next up is comments or suggestions from the citizens. I don't have any blue cards. Does anybody want to make any comments for the council today? With no one coming up to the podium and no red blue cards submitted, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of consent items, and item 6A, the electric utility easement at 52 Riverview Lane.
Rozick, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. On to finance. Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3054, authorizing a budget amendment for landscape supply storage structure. Mr. Heppner.
As discussed at the Finance Committee a long time ago, we're looking for a budget amendment of $20,000 for the landscape supply storage structure. Again, repeating, this is because of very poor soils for our project. I worked with Giles Engineering, Marshall Engineers, and our contractor to come up with a very workable solution, which will become a floating slab with much steel reinforcement. It'll take a few extra days to do the work. We had $5,000 in contingency because we were up to the budget, so this would be $10,000 from capital reserves and $10,000 from the utilities for a total of $20,000.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Heppner from council members? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
On to new business. Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3052, awarding contract for the construction of the Northeast Sanitary Pumping Station/Park Shelter and corresponding budget amendment. Please note, this is a budget amendment.
So tonight, we're taking a look at the bids for the lift station in the Northeast Region that has a park shelter that is part of the lift station building. This is something the council's talked about, I think, since 2017, as we've been developing the Northeast Region and as the Prairie Creek subdivision developments continue to move out there. So now it's time to put the lift station in. We went out for bids on it. Two bids came back. Both of the bids are over budget, but the bids are within $18,000 of each other, so we feel like the numbers are good. So what we're looking at tonight is taking a look at the bids. We'd like to award a contract. We need to get the contract awarded so that that lift station can start to be built in time for the houses that are going out there. The one thing that was added to this contract as an alternate was a concession stand. So you'll see that in the bid document, in the bid on the note there, as an alternate, as a deduct. So if you don't want the concession stand, we can deduct the $67,000. So the recommendation from staff is, since these came in over budget, that we would take the deduct and get rid of the concession stand for now, until, you know, council decides where they actually want a concession stand out there. That's up to you, that, you know, completely up to you, but that's a recommendation from staff, is that we would take that deduct. Now, there's a couple of things here. So in the next page, you can see that the wastewater utility budgeted $990,000 for this. Their portion came in at 1.2 million. The park's impact fee budgeted about $400,000, and their part came in at about $850,000. So we obviously will need a budget amendment for this. For the wastewater portion, all of that will be special assessed back to the four developments out there that will be benefited by this new lift station. And I currently do have signed lien waivers from three of the four, and the other one's just on the way. So I have no problem with the landowners there, and they understand that they need it out here in order to develop. So that part is pretty much taken care of. And then the budget amendment for the park shelter comes from park impact fees. And I think the important thing for this is the lift station will support an additional 448 racks. Well, I guess 15 more, because they'll be in reserve. So those 448 racks will bring in about $3,000 each for park impact fees. So the cost of this will be covered by the Northeast Region itself. Questions about the park shelter or the lift station? Kevin and Craig are here to answer.
Alderman Rozick.
Yeah, I actually have quite a few questions on this one. You know, I don't want to take too much time, but I am concerned about the size of the cost increase for the shelter. One of the reasons we, I think, voted last year, the year before, to do these in combination was that we felt we would save some money by having the lift station done and that infrastructure, the toilets, the water, everything right there. And now we're looking at something that's, you know, essentially $550,000 more than what we had planned. I'm not oblivious to cost increases and all that, but that's big. So where does this take us on our park impact fees? Because we were in the hole by what, 200 or 300 grand? This will take us back to a million, which is fine with all the units coming in. I think we'll cover that. But it's still, I don't want to be, I don't want to squander the money just because we got it coming in either. So then that begs the final question, which would be, can we do the lift station without doing the park, the shelter now? Why?
You should go to the mic, please.
Because it wasn't bid, we bid it without the concession stand as an alternate. The bathrooms were, you know, was part of our direction. That was part of the lift station project.
Part of the whole deal.
So we don't have any price decrease for the lift station. We asked them after we got the prices if they could just give us a breakdown of what it was for treatment plant compared, or the wastewater plant compared to the park impact, and they told us it was 640. So that's all we have.
At this point, we can't take the park shelter and bathrooms out of this bid. So if you decide not to do it, we would have to go back out for bids again for just the lift station, which, in my understanding, is puts this project too far behind schedule.
Is that true, Kevin?
Yeah, because June of next year, they want to have the lift station up and running. We're basically pushing these guys this year to make sure that they get the pipes in the ground and also the can for the pumps to be in. If we don't get that in by this time of the year, we're not going to be ready for next year.
I don't disagree with that, but let's, I mean, these guys, you've already given you a bid. So if you went back to the guys, the two that already gave you bids and said legitimately, we're just doing the lift station now, it's going to take them another six months to give you a bid?
Well, no, because we're going to have to go out and do a complete new bid. We can't go out and ask for that. You have to open, yeah, you have to open bid, wait 30 days.
Yeah. Alderman Mulder.
Just to be clear, the new 881, that includes the bathroom piece of that, right? That's the bathroom and the shelter.
Yep.
Yeah, the 881 is actually with contingency, so the breakdown really is 1.2 million and 800,000. So yes, it's about double what, the cost estimate was done back, I would say, November of last year. So it was about 1.3. So, yeah, we all think it's high, but we also know what's going on in the world. So that's, so we're trying to figure out the best way. That's why we decided not to do the, even though it's a really good price for the concession room, it makes sense not to do that if we can do the rest of it. The, I'll say as far as the park use, because we had our park board meeting out there in June, and we walked all the property, and pickleball's going along and being constructed will be done this month. So part of this is the, obviously, support pickleball, but anything else that gets developed there. I guess the next option would be porta potties, and that could be for years, I would say. It also supports the electricity for lighting, as that's supposed to be developed next year. So all this comes to this building and then gets fed out to the pickleball court. So it's kind of tied to that, but, I mean, it's your choice. The, we would have to rebid. I think there'd have to be some redesign also for the project. You can't just bop off that piece of the page and do it, so.
If I'm hearing it correctly, our only choice is to approve this or disrupt construction for the developer. Is that basically where we're at?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Well, I got, but is to approve it with or without the-
Concession.
The concessions.
Yeah, right.
Right. And the concessions, how many people? And part of that discussion that we previously had was, we didn't know what was going in the Northeast Regional Park. So we didn't necessarily know what a size of concessions. We still don't, kind of. So how was that designed? What can it accommodate for? Because I can't see it necessarily being less expensive in the spring of next year. So if it's $80,000 now or $100,000 next year, why don't we do it right, do it now? But if it's, we don't know where we need concessions. Well, concessions by a bathroom and by where all that activity is going to be. The discussion at the park board in June really was about where to place things and facilities. And the concession was really tied to the softball diamonds, and as we walked and talked about it, it made sense probably not to have the softball diamonds in that piece of the park, likely on the north end of it. And we've talked in the future, will it be a separate building and separate facilities and storage and concessions then? So this would probably not be used as a concession stand for quite a while. So I agree, for $67,000, it's a great price, but do we really need it? It's a 19-foot by 24-foot space. And we also talked about storage, you know, can we use that? But it's still only, you know, an eight-foot ceiling and a door that's six foot wide at best, but so storing a mower and those kind of things wouldn't work there either.
So we're in a crummy position, and I would expect more discussions like this for the next 12 to 18 months because of what we're seeing with the bids. Also, when we go out for these engineering bids and all the different components, they'll only hold them for a short period of time, and then we know that we're going to end up with a 6% to 10% increase if we delay some of these components. So I don't think there's a great answer here, but I think you have something proposed that you can act in some direction. Alderman Mulder, how come do you live?
So I, when do you think we will have like a plan for the full Northeast Regional Park? We, this is where, I'm sure you'd like to rather have a plan than piecemeal this all together, but now we put the pickleball court somewhere that we didn't consider other places because there wasn't anything else to consider, and now we might be spending more money on concessions in the future. So what's your timeline?
Hopefully within the next year, but it's, again, it's a, did we know pickleball was going to come alive and join that? It's hard to predict. So I think the softball fields make some sense to the north side. Whether it's two fields, four fields, whatever, it's a little more of the, will be the commercial area and maybe multifamily. So we've kind of settled on that, but what's going to happen on the southern part is going to be more just grass fields, athletic fields. Is there a playground? Is there tennis courts? I mean, it's kind of open, and we can throw that out, do a survey, or have a whole big meeting about it, but you're going to get 100 different opinions, and so.
But it's safe to say you're going to need, we're going to need a separate extra bathrooms over where the softball goes. It's a porta potties of softball.
In the future, yes.
So you'd probably softball concessions over there as well.
Alderman Kavieski.
I think, I guess, the main point of this discussion is concessions. Concessions at this location make sense regardless of where the baseball goes at some point, because when you do concessions, if the baseball goes to the north, you're going to have to run water and all kinds of other, it's going to be much more expensive than $80,000 to do a concession stand up there. So, and there's going to be activities to the south, including pickleball, that could make use of the concession. I'm in favor of keeping concessions included in this.
Another option I'll just throw out there is if it's a concession stand in two years, but in the meantime, we're going to be renting the shelter out to people. It could be used as an indoor kitchen, and that could be an add-on revenue for it, if that's a route you want to go. Just so you know, the size of the outdoor shelter is 24 by 32, which may sound like a lot, but it's substantially smaller than both Fowler and Roosevelt. So it's, those are, what is the, I didn't, I had the numbers, but 24 by 32 is probably a third of those sizes. So it's a nice size, but it's not going to be this huge shelter. So it's, it could be a decent rentable spot, and there's going to be a dropdown window, and you'll have electric and do all your crock pots and things like that. So that has the potential to do that in the meantime, until you maybe run into or develop into a concession stand.
Alderman Rozick.
The full portion of the project that's the lift stationed, is that part of the project, the one with the bathrooms, or is that connected to kind of the shelter side of it, the 850? How does that-
It's connected, it's the lift station, bathrooms.
Gotcha.
Concession stand, pavilion.
Okay, gotcha. So the bathrooms are part of your side of the project, Kevin, essentially?
Well, they can charge to parking rack.
They will be, okay.
Yep.
I don't-
We're doing a lot of, you know, like the, we need water, they need water, so some of that funds is going back and forth, correct?
I don't want to put our utilities or the development in a bad hole, but I am concerned about the price increase. I think we're kind of in a pickle here. I don't know what I'm going to do, to be honest with you.
I think it's a tough vote for everybody. I would concur, and I think, what I guess what I'm hearing too, Craig, is that maybe if you can work a little bit more with Mark, because the council wants to try to get a little more definition of what that park's going to look like, and I know you've done a lot of work already. But I think that if maybe we can shove that a little higher on the priority list, that might help us with future things that come to that area, just on a timeline. But I know that's easier said than done. That, I think, would be helpful. Alderman Mulder.
Oh, so once that's built, we will put a path in from pickleball over there, whether it's temporary or-
Right. It would, temporarily it would be a stone path. We're looking at asphalt eventually. But right now, you could walk across the field. It's 300 feet approximately.
As long as you have hip waders on, right.
Well, when it rains three and four inches, then, yes.
But that, there?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that that would, you mentioned that being rentable space. I would think, no, with at least an anchor element within the Northeast Regional Park, you're going to see more activity. It's going to see an opportunity for the community to engage in that space, rentable. Again, I don't see that not needing it at some point sooner than later. I'm, it is kind of hard, but I'm going to be in favor of including the concessions and-
What I think, I think you're hearing, if it is, does go forward with concessions, we definitely want you to rent it.
Yes, we would, well, there would be an added, obviously an added charge. So typically, we charge $100, $150 for an outdoor shelter. You'd probably tack on another 100 bucks or something with it. It's well worth it for a family that can have some stuff inside and outside.
Yeah, yeah. So just to, so we're clearing those numbers, if we rent it out, we would have to rent it out 5,900 times to even come close to the amount of money we're talking about spending on a shelter in a park that we have no plan for.
We'll do that in the first year.
Yeah, we'll do that for, I mean, just the renting that out is almost completely meaningless in the whole grand scheme of the spend here, so.
I agree. It's just, we have a public space, usable public space. So how are we going to use that space?
Well, here, I'm just saying the logic of that, and I'm not attacking you on it, like- But the logic on that has been used in the past, and it was used on the community center, and we're still not making money, in fact, losing money on rentals. And that's like prime, in front of the lake, have your wedding there, you know, dream wedding, and we're not making money, so.
I'm, just for the record, I am by no means advocating for that because we get 250 bucks. I'm advocating for that because it becomes more functional space in an area that people are going to start to gather for pickleball and other activities. There's the track there that I think I've seen people, I've walked that. You're going to see more activity, so you might as well make it functional, community space.
I think you both make good points, and I don't think there's a right one, both of you, but I think that's really what Matt and what Lou have articulated is really what you have to think about in your vote. Alderman Mulder.
I'm going to, I'm, the attraction of only spending this 80,000 or whatever it is, but, you know, spending money to save money isn't usually a good thing. So I think if we had a, we could easily put bathroom in concessions. We're going to have to do that in the future to service the softball on the north side of the park, which will be equidistant from pickleball right now. So we might not have, we'll have a couple of years, maybe, where pickleball can't have indoor concessions. They could still do it out of the pavilion piece that's there, and I think it's just better. I don't think we need two concession sets in that park. That would just be overkill.
And I don't, I don't think, the pickleball people have not requested that.
Right, it would be nice to have.
You couldn't justify a concession just with pickleball, right?
No.
No. You're going to need softball fields. Before you can justify having a concession stand.
So we'd end up with two sets of concession stands, the ones we built first at an economy price, I'm going to say would be seldom used. So I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward without.
Well, there are a couple of things about that space. I actually agree with Lou that they'll be used a lot, but I also agree with Matt that there's no financial gain in how it's set up. So both of those components are in conflict, and I think all the comments and your comment also added to, added good points to the group. Any other comments before we entertain a motion?
This, we need, we need super majority in this, right?
We do.
Correct. And we have, I mean, so just to be, we have to pass this.
Yes.
It'd be nice to vote whether or not you want the concession stand first, and then we'll vote on the awarding the contract and the budget amendment. Because I can't get-
Alderman Shellpepper.
So why do we need the concession stand right now? I'm trying to-
I'm not saying we need it.
Yeah, okay.
That's up to you guys to decide.
Is it a wise spend right now or not?
It was asked to do what we did, to put it as an alternate, to have this very conversation. And at that time, we were, this is back in January, we didn't really have a clue if the softball fields were going to move immediately or not.
So I'd like to entertain a motion that addresses a concession stand in some fashion.
I'll make a motion that we exclude the concession stand from the plan as of now.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Yeah, it passes four to three.
So cast was four. So cast was four to three, so let's move on to another item.
So does that, what, I, is, so the concession stand is still in?
No, the concession stand is out.
No, 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 no. Hey, let's slow down here, guys. Concession stand did not pass.
Right, it said exclude the concession, excuse me, concession stand.
Or look for a, a motion to adopt the resolution as written. Because as written, it takes the concession stand out. And includes the budget amendment.
And while we're trying to do, yeah.
I think somebody was.
Well, the motion was to exclude.
Correct.
And I said aye, nay, nay, aye, aye.
Aye. Nay.
Aye.
Nay, so it is four, three, right, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Did you write it, calculate it?
Yeah, so it passed.
That's just for the amendment.
The amendment passed, so it's pulled out.
Which is up next.
Okay.
That needs the super majority because it's a budget amendment.
So in a four, three vote, you have decided to exclude the concession stand in this part of the development. Now, we have before you the resolution, which is a budget amendment, which includes the exclusion of, recommendation exclusion of that which you've already voted on. But please be, understand that this vote needs to be a super majority because it's a budget amendment. So Lori, would you please reread what they're voting on to make sure everybody's crystal clear?
Sure, so now, so now the motion should be to adopt Resolution 22R3052 that awards the construction contract to August Winter and Sons for a total of $2,204,400 with a 10% contingency, with a budget amendment for both the wastewater and the park impact fees included in the resolution.
So I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Kavieski.
Second.
As, as, as read?
As read. Just for clarity, for voting, even though Alderman Douglas is not here, it requires a six vote.
Correct.
In favor of, for a super majority.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Mulder. Any further discussions or questions? Alderman Shellpepper.
And so we need to pass this because this is for the lift station, basically.
Correct.
To service all of the development that's happening around it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rosak.
Nay.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
So the motion fails five to two.
You just killed a subdivision.
You guys.
Now.
All right, I'm, I'm a little confused here. You can kill the subdivision, that's not true. It's patently not true.
It's not.
You killed the timeline.
They can go back and rebid and that developer can come in and help us get it bid out properly. We, we are significantly over what we said we were going to build.
It's going to cause, this is going to cause everybody more money, us and the developer.
Not true. They can go back and get that rebid in 30 days if they want to.
Right, but, but our, the, the bid will go up.
We don't know that.
We don't know it won't.
Ever, what has, what has.
The bid in front of us went up significantly from what we thought we were going to, we were voting for. So one of the things, now, we're, we're talking rebidding, but are, are we rebidding the exact same project? No, do the lift station without.
You want to separate out the bathrooms.
Do the lift station without an $880,000 structure that we don't even know should be there.
Well, the.
$880,000 for a park shelter.
So you don't want the bathrooms there either. You want, you want a cafeteria plan. Do the lift station, do the bathrooms, do the, do the thing. And we can pick from those three which we want to do, do the.
Yeah. That's the way it should have been bid out. What, what we were faced with today is a fata complice that we should not have been faced with. Absolutely not. I guess the. We had discussed this, we, we had discussed this back when we were bidding out for the engineering. And at that time, we talked about all these components. And the only thing that raised a question was the concession stand. And the motion that night said that we would, you know, bid that out as an alternate in order to give the common council time to get more information on just the concession stand portion. So everything else that was in the package that was here tonight had been discussed and approved when we moved forward with the engineering design.
But we took the concession stand out of it.
Correct, because that was the one component that back when we were doing the engineering, there was questions, concerns, so we said we would bid that as an alternate. So that way we would know what dollar amount could be deducted if we opted not to go forward with it. And those are the numbers that we brought tonight to the council.
Kevin, do you? Alderman Spiegelberg first, and I'll come back.
I'd like to get this put back on the agenda for next time when Chris Douglas is here and we have a full council to vote. Is that possible?
It's possible. Alderman Mulder.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if Alderman Ellis is reconsidering his vote. And is there a way to put it back on the agenda even for tonight and revote to make sure that we all have the facts correct?
I would ask for legal counsel's opinion on the process, please.
One of the individuals during this meeting that voted in the, to reconsider can bring a motion to reconsider. But otherwise, it would have to go to the next meeting.
So the question is, if there's someone here that's voted to the negative and you want to reconsider, now is your time to do that.
I would like to bring that and reconsider.
Do you need a second? Second.
One second, I've got to add all this stuff.
Okay, let me know when you're ready. The motion is based to reconsider by someone, by Alderman Ellis, who wants to reconsider his vote and has been seconded by Alderman Spiegelberg. And when you're ready, if we can call.
I am ready.
Call, roll, please.
Now, before you do that, I just want to be clear. The concession stand is out.
Correct.
Yes. And if it doesn't pass, then they have to come back and bid whomever those individuals were that bid prior.
But it's going to push the whole project off.
Kevin?
So my, my question to you is, what, what, I'm relying on you at this point.
Okay, so the process would be is, if this doesn't get, doesn't go through, we go out, re-advertise for bids, bid the project separate. What else, my assumption would be we bid the lift station separate from the bathrooms and the pavilion. And then they'd have 30 days, so it'd be two, two, three weeks for newspaper, because it's got to be two, two subsequent weeks. And then 30 days for them to bid. So you're looking at middle of October, before we even get bids, to the end of October. We need to have the structures in the ground before it freezes this year.
Matt, what is your argument?
Look, I don't want to put the subdivision in hack, but the original reason we talked about this was we were going to save money by doing these projects together. I just think the number for the shelter is too big. Shelter is what it is. It's probably going to go up in cost over time. But this is, it's a big, it's a big spend. It is park impact fees. It's a tough vote. But I, I think we should also vote on things for the right reasons, not just, you know. I'm, I'm sorry that we're, we're bound up on it, but it is what it is. I don't agree with it, so.
Alderman, Kavieski.
So if we structured the bid that goes back out in segments to include the lift station as a base, an option for the bathroom, an option for concessions and shelter, that, is that what you're looking for?
I mean, I, I don't, look, when, when we originally voted on this a year ago to do it like this, we were told we were going to save money by packaging this all together. Now we're in a position where we're spending two times what we anticipated the cost for a shelter that we may or may not need or may not be in the right place.
Right, and, 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 and I.
And now we're being told we have to do it because this is how we bid it out. Because that's, we were told it would save us money doing it this way. And if we don't do it, the subdivision can't get built, which is patently untrue. The subdivision will get built. It's just going to get built a little bit later or they're going to have to change plans. That's not our problem.
The, the worry about the subdivision timeline isn't necessarily my, my primer. But if, if council decides to move forward, and I guess this is a question for both, if council decides to move forward in October with a bid that was submitted for the lift station and bathrooms, because I would, you can tell me, you're going to associate the bathroom with the lift station. There's really not much more efficiency that you can gather in costing that out, right? I mean, you'd create a separate bathroom anywhere else and it's going to be more expensive.
Right. The big thing is, if we don't, if we separate, try to separate these things, they're going to have to go and redesign the drawings and stuff.
Right.
Because right now, we don't have, we won't have water in the facility because it's planned to be in the bathroom section.
Right.
Then we're going to have to make some drawing changes and stuff also before we can bid this thing out.
So you're going to need, you're going to need, you're going to need money for.
Design.
Design.
Redesign, rebid. Rebidding.
Plus rebidding.
Plus rebidding. And, and if we end up back at the same place where we have a bathroom associated with a lift station, which is really where the cost is, the way I'm, I'm understanding it, it's really, the shelter portion of it is not $800,000. It, that's relatively insignificant to, to that. We're going to end up not just wasting time, but spending more money to get to the same place.
I think Alderman Kavieski makes a lot of really good points. And I think as council, you have to recognize, our staff does a great job to try to get these estimates to us and make, that was a year ago that was made. And yeah, these things can come in really high and then you make the decisions on what you do. But you've got to look at where we are. You do have to look at timelines because those timelines affect a lot of things that go in. So I can tell you personally, I'm very much in favor of moving this forward because I think it's best for our community. I'm not saying we're doing this for the developer. I think the whole picture is best for the community. I like that you've pulled out the concession. I think that was definitely the right move. It's hard because, you know, it's a little cheaper now than it will be later. But we're going to be on a bunch of these different things. And we sat here a year ago and we pulled out one thing because we, we had one expectation. Nobody did anything wrong. And so we're at this position and we're going to see more things like this compared to at least two years ago when these guys were all really spot on in their estimates. But it's a little bit different time and we have, you guys have to decide how you value that. And that's going to be up to you. So we have, we have a motion on the floor. Can I just make one? Yes. And just, and we have a second. We're still open for comments. Alderman Mulder.
Attorney Riffle, this doesn't cause us any, the developer can't come back to us with anything here that we're delaying their development.
Nobody can sue anybody for anything, but I am not.
Do they have legal, would you, in your opinion, do they have legal standing?
They had to rely on the fact that we were going to build a lift station. If we don't decide to build a lift station, they're just going to have to sit on their approved preliminary plat for however long it takes.
So they wouldn't be able to break ground really in any houses until March then?
Oh, no.
I mean, earliest?
No, this lift station will take a year to build.
Oh.
If it's passed today.
If it's passed now.
If it passed now.
And if it doesn't pass now.
Probably 2024.
So we're a year delay. We're costing them a yearish.
You should really talk in the mic, please.
Thank you.
Excuse me, it's going to be nine months if they order the generator right now and about eight months for the SCADA panel. That's how far everything's behind. All electrical equipment and generators are ridiculously far behind.
Alderman Kavieski.
My last comment, because I, I understand Matt's, Matt's point. Why, why make a, a bad decision now without the information that you're looking for? Wait and do it right. That, kind of why you, you gave the negative. If I thought we would end up in a different spot than where we are right now, I'd, I'd be with you. But I don't think we're going to end up being in a different spot. I think it's just going to delay and, and, and add more cost, which is why I'm in the favor. And, and I call for vote.
Yeah, I agree. So request for call to vote. We have a motion and a second. I'd like to call roll, please.
Can I just get clarification on what the motion is? Are we revoting or are we making, are we voting on whether or not Kevin can change his vote?
It's a revote.
I didn't say I'll change my vote.
A yes vote means you start over. And then there can be a motion to approve this project without the concession stand.
And you have a revote, so.
This is a simple majority?
Yep.
This is a simple majority.
Yeah.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Rosak.
Nay.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Aye.
That's Kavieski, all righty.
So we are now, I'd like to entertain a, a motion for a revote.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I'm not trying to convince anyone to vote any other way at this point. I, I think we should take this as a learning opportunity that in the future, if we're going to package significant projects together, that we're cautious about how those are packaged together. And that when they're coming in significantly over budget, we, we have some ability to make some changes or avenues for recourse. Because right now, we're not given any avenue for recourse. We're given a fata complice and we're spending a lot more for essentially a park structure. So I'm still going to vote no because I think it's the right vote, so.
And I, I agree with your comments about looking at these a little bit differently. But if you think about it, a lot of it comes down to, as a lesson, lesson learned is we were asked as council during the RFP process. So I think as we do more RFPs in the future, let's ask some questions. So I think that was, that was well said. Alderman Altman Cloth.
So kind of in agreeance or agreeing, but not agreeing with Matt, you know, going forward. It needs to, needs to be looked at a little bit differently so that when things do come in high, we can go, eh, you know, this needs to come off. I'm not going to change my vote, although I'm very tempted to.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
And I understand what Alderman Rosak's saying, but we also need to keep in mind that a year ago, we gave them direction to proceed in this way. So we've had all this time to think if we wanted to change that through. And I know, I understand we're at the 11th hour with this. But we gave them, this is the direction that we gave them as a council a year ago.
Right, which, which is, right, to my point, which is, that's the learning chance, right? Is, I think we should be very cautious on packaging these deals together. And then one part of the project seems extremely high versus the lift station section. And that's where I think we're running, that's where I'm in my head running into problems, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
One last thing.
You said that before.
That was a different subject.
That was the second last thing.
A year ago, we, we were kind of under the assumption that the baseball fields would be in the south as opposed to the north. And utilization of the park has evolved, which is one of the drivers of, of some of this discussion. So I think that goes back to the point of, we need to nail down the Northeast Regional Park planning.
Agreed.
So we can be on the same page moving forward. I'm, I'm in the favor of this because I believe whatever goes in that southern portion, you're going to have kids, you're going to have bathroom needs. It's not across a, a, a small span. It's, it's almost 40 acres. So you're going to, it, service for that is, is, I think, a community benefit. So, we can be on the same page moving forward. I'm, I'm in the favor of this, because I believe whatever goes in that southern portion, you're gonna have kids, you're gonna have bathroom needs, it's not across a, a, a small span, it's, it's almost forty acres, so you're gonna, it, service for that is, is, I think, a community benefit, so I'm, I'm all in favor for that.
Alderman Shellpepper.
So, we're voting on a, the lift station, a bathroom, and a, a shelter, right?
Correct.
And I guess, I mean, and, and, you know, in my mind, the assumption is all those, you know, we have to do the lift station to move forward with the development. We've identified that. The restrooms and, and shelter are kinda like ancillary, secondary pieces, but are still connected, so I guess, I, I agree with you, Matt, overall, but I, I, in, in the principle, but I, I just feel like, in my mind, I'm kinda like with Lou, it's, it's gonna be more expensive in the long run, is what I'm worried, if we, if we piece this out, and so, that's why I think, at the end of the day, you know, I, I'll stick, I'll, I'll keep my same vote, but I'm not, I'm not happy about it either, so.
And I think the point's well taken. Let's, let's learn from this and improve. Alderman Ellis.
So, my, my concern is vision. I, I, I can't see the vision that you all are trying to create. I have my own vision, but then we start piecemealing it, and we take this out, and we put this over here, and we do that, and that's why I voted the way I did. It's, it's, it's important that we, we, we have the vision that you're looking for us to have. I, I think I'm just gonna leave it there, because it's, it, it's very confusing. It's tremendously confusing to me, because I, I, I don't do anything, I, I don't make decisions without understanding what the final product has the potential of looking like, and in this case, I can't see it.
Mr. Hapner, any comments? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you wanna respond to that, cuz it's come up a couple times, and then let's move on to a vote.
I appreciate it. The conceptual plan for this park, well before my time, has this same lift station, restroom, pavilion in the exact same spot as we're talking about. That has not changed, so that's conceptual plan. Now, we're trying to take it to reality, so that plan that's been out there for the world for five years is exactly the same. Now, what happens in the other pieces, that is a little more to be determined. So, yes, I think it's important that this happens there, and yes, there has been vision for this, but again, as we talked about before, we certainly will try to get you the, we can bring that forward, a whole plan, but that plan may change. We may have softball diamonds in the northeast, and this restroom here, and a playground here, and a pickleball here, and in two years, something else changes, cuz lacrosse becomes really big, and now we have that field here, so I can't predict all that. No one else has predicted that. We're doing the best we can with what we have right now, but this particular project is exactly in the same spot it's been for five years.
Thank you.
Hasn't changed.
No.
You could call roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alright, then.
So, it, it passes and moves forward, and I think that we still have to come back to, how can we keep ourselves, and I'll work with staff, that we can try to do more to reduce some of those things happening in the future. Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to staff reports. Mr. Frye.
Thank you. I just briefly wanted to bring up a situation that took place on LaBelle a couple weeks ago. Everybody here knows what had happened there. The reason for my comments tonight was, I wanted to highly compliment all the agencies that came together and worked very hard. I'd like to single out Chief Brad Bowen for the leadership that he provided, the communication he provided, and all the information that went out to the community. I thought everybody that was involved with it did an excellent job, and just wanted to point that out. Obviously, our, our prayers go out to the families that had lost loved ones in these incidents, but overall, I think we should be looking at how lucky we are to have, you know, an agency such as Western Lakes, but also the whole other group of agencies that they were able to pull in and assist them with their efforts, so.
Thank you, and I'm adding to that are your, the lifeguards. Wow, when you were down there and saw what that team of lifeguards did, and they came up with ideas. They were, it gave me a lot more faith of that generation, and Craig, hats off to you and your team, because that was pretty incredible. Any comments from Alderman? Alderman Shellpepper?
You know, thank you to the first responders for the work they did. Appreciate it. At the end of the day, we still had two people who, who died, and I asked for information, you know, regarding more specifics on boat rentals in the, in the, in the city, and other, other items surrounding this issue, and I think it's important the common council gets that information, and that we take a hard look at this, and making sure we're doing everything we can upfront to protect people who are renting boats and using them in, in, our boat launch in the city of Oconomowoc, regardless of where it takes place, or whether it's in a different municipality, so, and then the same goes for McDowell Court. We gotta get something done there. We had a constituent who was significantly injured on that, in that road, and I've, you know, I've asked to get the ball rolling there for a while, and we need to get that done, because we're having people get hurt out there. Thank you.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman's, uh, Altman-Cloth.
I just wanna say thank you to one of our local businesses, Silver Circle Sports, that put on the Lake Country Triathlon this last weekend. Now, I'm a little biased, cuz I'm in charge of the swim part of the tri, and we have amazing youth in this community that, again, are their lifeguards. We also had Western Lakes Dive and Rescue Team out there just in case. We did hire them back in May. It was not a last-minute decision. They were incredible to work with, and also, just a big thank you to the residents, you know, in the Merchant's Plat, you know, District Two area. I know that's a huge burden on your residents. You know, the lake is restricted, the boat launch is restricted, the park, you know, getting in and out of that area is, is a hot mess. I completely understand that, but I think what it brings to our community, and the feedback that we've gotten from the tri has been tremendous. We had one athlete, lives in the Madison area, works in the Brookfield area, drives by our exit twice a day, every day, and never once did he ever think that there was this gem right off of Highway sixty-seven, and he told the owner of the company, "I can't wait to bring my family back here to vacation," so I just think it's a great community event.
Yeah, that was really cool, and all the people coming from Witz with coffee, it was nice to see them using some of the downtown vendors.
Oh, yeah, the spectators a lot use their-
Alderman Kavieski?
Yesterday, County Executive Paul Pharaoh issued a, um, fentanyl community health crisis for Waukesha County, along with Washington County. Fentanyl is, is more than a, a drug. It is a poison, and it is killing a lot of our residents here locally, within the state, and across the country. The state of Florida has declared emergency associated with it. The interesting thing about fentanyl is, it, it, it is being laced in prescription drugs that are bought online, so somebody takes something, they think it's one thing, it's laced with fentanyl, and they die. I'd like to thank Chief Pfister and Captain Bowen, Captain Tim, for being there yesterday to represent law enforcement and represent our community. I wasn't, I was unable to attend. I would highly encourage not only this city, this community, but all cities and communities to take action and follow the lead of this county, and I hope other counties follow suit. It is taking the lives of rich, poor. It's gender discrimin, it doesn't discriminate against gender, race, any of that. We, we are in a bad spot. Enough fentanyl has crossed the southern border over the last year and been confiscated to kill every man, woman, and child in the United States three times over. That's a lot. So, I would appreciate if we could take a look at some kind of declaration, help with, sorry, to help with awareness. Less than thirty-six percent of, I believe it is, the youth under eighteen know what fentanyl is. So, awareness is a big thing. There is a new campaign. Fentanyl is a new F-word. If we can help to support that, all of those things could save a life, and this council has spent a lot of time and money on, on roads and other activities to make sure that we have a safe community. This is definitely up there, so I just wanna take this time to, to make that aware, and if you, I'd love to work with you on, on drafting something or putting something in place along with Chief and Captain.
That'd be awesome. I think the whole council would appreciate finding out, learning more, and then trying to take it into action items, or if there's financial needs to do, cuz I'm not aware of where that's going, then, are there resources? Cuz now's the time, through your budget process, that if there's a need for resources, now would be the time to discuss it at council. So, wonderful if you could connect with Mark and myself, or either one of us. Let's get a little, we need to get a little bit more up to speed. Mark may, may already be up to speed. I'm not, on Paul Pharaoh's announcement, but that would be great.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Alderman and Alderman Rosick?
Yeah, I just, I, I, we've asked for, we asked for this a while back. I think I might have, and I think we got some update, but I, I think it's important, given the size of the project and the scope, that we have an update on where we are at on five-seventeen, funding, shoreline restoration, whatever. I just haven't heard much, and it could just, it could be on council floor, it could be in an update on Friday. I, I really don't care how we get it, but I'm just curious where we're at.
Some stuff will come to you at the next council meeting, so it's already in the queue.
Good.
A week, so you beat us to the punch.
Perfect.
And we'll give you that update, so. The big, the big slowdown is we're waiting for a grant, trying to save money, so. Any other comments from council? Some of the other items that some council members have brought to us that you want on the agenda are in the queue. If any of you have brought those and have questions, please see Mark Frye. So, we're putting those things in. We're just making sure that we have all the information, so that you guys can then try to make, make a decision, so. But if we're dropping the ball on anything, please just email Mark right away, because there are a lot of things moving around, a lot of moving pieces. Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Kavieski?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Frye, glad to see you in your seat. I would assume that this is an official identifier that the interim role of city administrator that Lori was filling in on is no longer in place.
So, my plan right now is that I was only gonna work partial days for this first week and see how things go. Health-wise, I'm doing very well. I still have an issue with fluid around one of my lungs that I'm working through. I get tired before the end of an eight-hour day, as I build my energy back up, so potentially another two weeks. And the interim roles for both, Dave Stoizer for Public Works and Lori as city administrator.
So, probably the best thing is I stand corrected when you email or have questions. Do it to both Mark and Lori, and I'm happy to be on those two. Does that clarify that?
That helps.
Great question.
Thank you. Welcome back.
With no further question, or comments from the mayor, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Kavieski?
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.